And according to Rishim, we are on air. We just have the, this is our camera, it's just wide angle, we're not gonna be switching back and forth.
All right. Mr. Siebel, your committee.
Oh. Good evening, this is the budget meeting and Mr. Sowers is out there raring to go, so take it away.
Let's take it easy with the raring to go part. Standing up so I don't fall asleep. All right, so I have, just for the record, the mayor currently has editor access during this meeting. He will lose that as soon as we're done with this meeting. So if anything goes haywire for the next hour, hour and a half, whatever, it's his fault.
Is this what you want us on the two oh one?
Uh, well, do we wanna start on the general fund or the non-general? Janice, I assume we just wanna comb through fund by fund? Is that?
That's fine.
Okay. We can do that. Do you want to? General may be easier to do today. And then we'll use the sixteenth maybe to do non-general. Does that sound good? Work? Question?
I missed what you said.
Oh, I said, do you wanna just do the not, the general today and then non-general on Monday?
That's fine.
Okay. All right, and then maybe I'll address some of the questions that's in this shared document. I've also created a, another document that I'll share with you today. Well, maybe tomorrow morning after I get. So probation in the court dropped off an updated appropriations list that identifies some of their carryover and some of their grants. And will allow me to update some of the appropriations a little bit, so that'll change ever so slightly. Not anything radical. But through that, a couple of you have seen it on your way in. I've got some running totals, what you'll see tomorrow morning. As I've got it broken down by the fund name, the general fund appropriation by fund, and the general fund carryover by fund. And then there's another tab that says non-general carryover. It's the same situation, it's non-general fund appropriation by fund, non-general fund carryover by fund. So before we hop into the general fund, right now, we're sitting at, in the non-general, because that's what I've been able to work on today, I have more clarity there. We're sitting at total appropriations forty-six million, three hundred and eight dollars, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty cents.
Say that again, forty-six?
Forty-six million, three hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty cents. And if I say anything completely off the wall, forgive me, I am exhausted.
And again, that is what you're looking at appropriating in non-general funds.
In non-general funds, yeah. And of course, that's, you know, those shekels have shackles, so not a lot, not a lot of discretionary movement over there. The carryover, now between carryover encumbrances and grant income that we can either anticipate or, so when I say anticipate, that includes like the college township contract that we have, so we know we're getting a half a million dollars every year from the college township, Kenyon College. So that includes that anticipated revenue. Actually, that's, never mind, I'm not gonna bring that up, because that's in the general fund. But there are, okay, TIF funds, that's a good example of that. The totality of all of those things that are not pulling from, you know, general fund revenues, or non-general fund revenues, sorry, is nine million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars, fifty cents, asterisk.
Go that again one time.
Yeah, nine million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and fifty cents. Do wanna let you know, we are actively working on doing some research on bonds. We have about, I don't know, Paul, ten funds probably that have anywhere-
Pay the bond, the bond funds out of, pay the principal and interest?
Right. So we're, we're trying to figure out exactly how much. And I went in and what I've done, just to, you know, highball it, that way we're not, you know, cutting ourselves off at our legs, is just to say, this is what we have appropriated in the past, we have not exactly always paid what we need to pay. I cannot justify that, I don't know why that was. Paul is actively working on that, he's creating a spreadsheet, that way we have some transparency on what we need to do in the future. So maybe there's carryover there. I actually, in fact, I know that we've encumbered money and not spent it. Whether we should be doing that or not, we'll find out. So that's a conversation that he's actively having, because I know that we just talked about one today. Yeah.
I mean, I, I paid bonds.
Do you wanna come up here and talk about this briefly? So-
It's just a struggle-
Go ahead.
All around. I, recently, within the last, you know, three weeks, four weeks, have gotten a handle on the bonds. I've been figuring them out because we get invoices in for payments due. And then, you know, okay, what do I do with this? In, earlier this month, last month, I'm sorry, we had over a million dollars worth, actually, on the first, over a million dollars worth of bond payments due. Almost missed that. And I paid them, but all, trying to figure out where all those line items are to take those that they're appropriated from, was like a nightmare. I mean, one of them had six different lines appropriated to. And we, we still didn't have enough appropriated. So we haven't even gotten to that part where we, we've taken them out of those lines, because we don't, we don't have the time or the effort to figure it out. So, and then later this, this week actually, or next week, I have another two hundred and some odd thousand dollar payment that needs to be made. And then there's payments at the end of January that need to be made. So this is just one little thing that we're kinda working on with that. And it, it's, it's kind of a, over and over, we figure this out, okay, we need to pay this. Okay, how do we pay it, where does it come out of? Well, who do we pay it to, even sometimes? How do we get that information? And then we find out that either it's not appropriated correctly, or there isn't enough in there, or I, we don't even understand what the heck's going on half the time. This is, this is something that's happening constantly throughout the day. Large, I'm talking about large because it's large dollar amounts, but just little dollar amounts. We had an, a grant come in for sixty-one hundred dollars. I didn't know anything about it, of course. And then experienced Mount Vernon asked me for five thousand dollars of that. So it took me, you know, an hour or so to figure out what revenue line it was set into. Okay, so it went, it went in, we got the, we got the funds, but I can't tell where it's been appropriated. So how do I pay that?
I'll give you an example of what the bonds are for.
Can I ask, can I ask a follow-up question to that? Is it safe to say, since we haven't gone to the voters for bonds, are these bonds for TIFs?
No.
No?
Some of them are, and-
Well, for example, the, the, the bridge down by-
Right.
These are debt service from, I want, we have, we still have a fund from debt service-
Okay.
For the water department from like nineteen seventy-six. Yeah. It would probably be, and this is, you know, I, I think I've kinda harped on this for a bit, and you're probably tired of hearing it, but as we go, as we move, and this guy can help, as we move forward in this process, it would probably be good to not only consolidate lines, but to consolidate funds. If this guy had like a debt service-
But you may not be able to do that.
Depending on the, yeah, depending on the bond.
Okay.
And some of these aren't, I, I say bonds because it's either bonds or a loan, and sometimes it's hard to tell between the two.
He's had an issue also with, we don't have corresponding revenue lines for the expense lines. And I think that's something that we can look into as well, which is why he often has to track, you know, six different expenditure lines. That's why you're gonna see that in the general fund, that networking expense explode, I'm sure you got that. But what we've tried to do is limit those lines, both with computer networking and the different departments with telephone lines and things like that, because it's the same kinda concept. It's hours of time, time lost, when we have to track over fifteen funds to thirty lines to pay a single bill. It's untenable.
So it sounds like you're unsure if we are budgeting for those things then, if you haven't figured them out yet.
We have to go high, like I said, like if we under-budget, then we can't pay it.
So, so what I have learned, and this is not always the case, but most of the time it is the case, is that you have an expense line, and you appropriate for that expense line. You include everything that you think you're gonna take out of that, including the revenue you know is coming in. I didn't think that was happening. You have a revenue line that you bring in the revenue for. And then at the end of the year, you have your expense lines, you have your revenue lines, and you balance to that. Just because you have revenue coming in into a revenue line, doesn't mean you can spend that if it's not properly appropriated. If it's not appropriated, then we have to come to you guys and say, this is unexpected revenue, it's going in this line. Can we appropriate more in this expense line so we can pay the bill? That's what's supposed to happen, then we have to file with the county. Now that's cumbersome to do that. So when we're looking at appropriations, we wanna make sure, okay, this is what we think we're gonna spend on everything, and oh yeah, I mean, we, we have this other project that we're gonna get reimbursed for, but we have to appropriate that for, for the proper dollar amount in order to spend.
Be interesting to know how much debt we're in between bonds and loans. What's our total debt out there?
About ten million right now.
Ten million dollars.
Yeah. Which is actually not too bad, I'm assuming. I don't think so.
Not a staggering figure.
Waterpark is going to end in the next couple of years?
Twenty-seven, I think.
Twenty-seven?
I think it was twenty-seven.
Paid one off in December first, and then there's another one that's gonna be paid, small one that's gonna be paid off. But still, it's, it's around ten million, and you figure our assets are around forty million. So just, I mean, we're, we're healthy. It's just, to follow the rules and to do things right in the government is hard.
It's very hard.
And what we need to do is-
Surprise!
Preach.
We need to do it right going forward, because, I mean, we're correcting mistakes now that we made, because we didn't know that we were making mistakes. Emily is, is doing all of this stuff virtually on her own. And she's doing a wonderful job. If, we, we need to take some insurance out on her, because if she gets hit by a bus, we're in- So, question Paul, and I know, do you have the tools, as in software and whatever, to-
Keep that in mind when we go to the general fund.
Get this, to get this straightened out or figured out? The software, we're getting training in, actually, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of this week, we've had training in the software, answering a whole bunch of questions for us. The, the software seems capable at that, but there's no reason why we can't use the software as is. So we are gonna move beyond paper and pencil? Yes. Thank you, good, it's good to know.
And to, to that point, the Civica software, which we've talked about, authority finance, authority payroll, authority yada yada. We are sticking with authority right now, we've had this discussion. It is way too much money and way too much work right now to try to take on another system. And frankly, like, we've talked to the county about their VIP system, I've worked in that when I was over there. It's not radically better. What we have done in the last two months is upgrade the current system, because we were two versions back.
If, if we were looking in a system down here and there was something out here that was so much better, then that might be to look at in, in the future. But my counselor, who I'm working with, says, you know, you might be like this. And why spend the money and the time to retrain on everything? I think it's a capable software right now, we just need to use it, and we need to use it properly. Good.
A big part, and today, we got the first draft of the Clark, Schaefer, and Hackett report back. And what you're gonna find in there is, you know, a lack of internal controls. And that's a big thing that we've started to address in the last few months, is that a lot more people can have access to their own budgets, get those revenues reports, get those expenditure reports. And that's how we're gonna solve this problem. We're training throughout all the departments, better understanding how this system works, get it up to-
We wanna get to a place where the department needs to come to me and say, Paul, this is what I wanna do, can I do it? And as opposed to, this is what I need, figure it out for me.
Yeah.
They need to know all that, you guys need to know all this and how it works.
Which is laid out in that budget narrative, by the way, that, you know, more regular, a process that you could predict.
I, I like to do a job to the point where I'm not needed anymore. I do, that's gonna take a long time on this job.
Yes.
But yeah, I mean, if you cross-train, everybody understands, and even if the, if, if the whole audit department leaves for some reason, that this city can still function, and not just well, not just a little bit, barely, but function well, then that's, that's gonna be what we're gonna try and do. I said enough, that's, I'm all geared up.
I was gonna say, what joy juice are you pouring?
Now that he's all good and ticked off, anybody else? Okay. What were we talking about?
You had the non-general fund, non-general carryover.
Yeah, the non-general fund, I think I told you those numbers. Any questions on those numbers? We'll get more accurate details when we get to the bonds. I mean, there are, right now, there are significant gaps in, you know, what we've encumbered, what we've paid out. Could I call that carryover? I could, but I don't think that's fair and accurate, so.
That's based on this version, not the one you saw Monday either, because we've been doing lots of-
Well, I mean, those numbers are still in there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if you wanted to do the math yourself, but I, I don't think that's an accurate picture, and I don't wanna, again, I don't wanna cut ourselves off at the leg, then have to come back in the middle of the year, ask you to re-appropriate five hundred thousand more dollars, and then we have to do some sort of, you know, re-up over at the county, like Paul mentioned. So that, better to aim high, make sure we get what we need in place, and then if we don't need it, then we just don't spend it. As Bruce has pointed out in the past, this is not a budget budget, these are appropriations. So we're permitting ourselves to spend should we need to spend, and if we don't, or if the revenue's not there, we don't do it. Any questions? Okay. Let's dig into the meat of the general fund. All right. Eleven hundred, council. This is where we buy Janice's beach house. Just kidding.
Do I get to go to the beach?
So-
It's all on paper.
Yeah.
Oh, it's all on paper.
I'll get you a postcard. All right. Let me get back to that first tab. Okay. So, we'll fly through this, stop me if you need to. Council, president, and members, this is all salary lines. We, true, just rounded this one up, eighty thousand for that. Do supplies and incidentals, this is bottles of water, paper, whatever. With your permission, a lot of the, so right now, my budget has actually carried a lot of the paper in this copier down here. But a lot of the paper every other week that gets expended out of that copier is for council work. We would like to work with the clerk of council, AKA the mayor's assistant also, to utilize some of council's funds to cover, I don't know, twenty-five percent of copier expenses. Copier supplies, not copier expenses. If in the thirty-six hundred, the one oh one thirty-six hundred, there is a copier contract line, that's what pays for the copier, but as far as copier expenses, paper, toner, things like that, I mean, you all got a ream, a piece of budget information and building stuff. So just keep that in mind. You guys don't really burn through that, so that could be appreciated. That security line is for our PD, stand out here, to just kinda supplement their pay, so that's what that is. Training, travel, and expenses, that's set at four thousand, that can send you guys to whatever conference you'd need to attend, send Janice back to her beach house, just kidding. All right, any questions on that one? Okay. Pretty routine. All right. Mayor's budget, mayor's salary, mayor's admin assistant. Now would be the time to talk about the communications director, I believe. So if, if you wanna flip to, do you all have your, a copy of your budget narrative? I gave Gordy Lance my budget narrative, so I don't know what page. Page fourteen, is that personnel?
Fifteen.
Is there an extra copy up there? Okay. So one of the positions that have been proposed is a communications director. Some folks in the community have brought this up, the mayor's definitely an advocate, and even people on council have mentioned this. What we are proposing, instead of creating a new position, and I need to emphasize, hang with me, while council would have to create a position on paper, we are not actually creating a new person. What would happen is, after council creates the position per legislation, we would transition the mayor's assistant into the communications director. What would happen then is my assistant, safety service director's assistant, would become a more general administrative assistant. So essentially, serving as the administrative assistant to both the mayor and the safety service director, we would change her job title, change some of her job duties. There would be no compensation change, she would just kinda perform a different sort of duties in the way that she does her day-to-day job.
Who's gonna be clerk of council?
What's that?
Who will be clerk of council?
Todd could still serve as clerk of council, uh, for the time, you know, for, he's fine doing that.
Until you-
I thought you-
Choose your other ways, no.
Look that out, okay.
The only thing that would change is Todd, Todd serves two roles right now. He is the mayor's assistant, he is also the clerk, and that is covered under a different contract. Okay. So at any point in time, if you decide that you don't want Todd being the clerk, you could take that away from him, hire a different part-time clerk. You have that option. Would not recommend. But under this, under this scenario, you create the position of communications director, Todd becomes that, the mayor's assistant goes away. Now the job does not, all right, it stays there, it becomes unfunded. Does that make sense? The communications director becomes that position. And then my assistant covers the duties of what the mayor's admin and my admin does.
And that, this position would be salaried then?
Yep.
So there's no change in money?
That's the-
No.
There's, it's a wash in terms of when you look at the numbers.
And Todd can do that.
Because he's getting overtime right now, and, when he comes in, and so this is basically a wash.
The question is, why Todd? And the answer is, Todd has had significant journalistic experience for years, and that's why this is even being considered. He's got, I, he's honestly got more journalism and media experience than he does being a city clerk, so. That's why we're entertaining the job.
We'd like to, we'd like to invest in his training also, to be able to do this very well, which is part of why that training is beat up.
Now, and that, for years, that has been something that folks have said that the city is missing. We're getting to the point that I think that that's something that we should consider. It's also something that is not just press releases and talking on the phone or talking on the radio. It is multimedia, social media, it's the website, it's things like that. So that would require training, but not an additional training budget. It's just everything that Todd is doing when he can, becoming his full-time job, and the other duties of an administrative assistant to the mayor, shifting over to Maureen, my assistant.
You believe Todd has the skill set to do this well?
I believe, I-
Absolutely.
I, yeah. And then where I think his, I don't wanna say, areas for growth. Where his areas for growth are, I believe Todd has the capacity to learn those things. So that's more multimedia, that's website development, that's things like that. But he currently does that with our current stuff.
Steve been asking if he's interested in it?
He's very interested.
This was talked about last year. I just wanna make sure he's, he's aware about-
Yeah, no, yeah, we didn't pull the wool over his eyes.
If this is budget neutral and Maureen can handle whatever is incurred there, then it makes sense.
The one thing that some have said is that if this is created, they want the job posted publicly, which I can understand and appreciate. That would change the dynamic though, because if that happens, and then, you know, the joke I've used is Katie Couric shows up. Sorry, Todd, you know.
We don't have to post it though legally?
Not if we, if we create the position and transition Todd over to it. We do not have to post the position as it being an exempt position and using a, essentially a title change. However, if council insists that the job be posted-
So you, you said budget neutral, but it's, it's an increase for him.
So, you know, it's a question.
He won't get overtime anymore, so it's, it's, it's a wash.
So the sixty-three, one ninety-two that has been expended this year is his pay plus any overtime that he's had to incur?
Yeah.
And by, when you go over a certain number, then you go to salary, is that correct?
Yep.
So I'm gonna bring this up just 'cause it's, it's the first time it appears, but it, this happens a lot going through here, so explain this to me. So take like the administrative position or the supply line. So when I look at what we approved in our budget last year, okay, we approved the fifty-four five. But we approved six thousand, five hundred dollars for supplies. Now we go to the admin assistant where we budgeted fifty-four, we still have twelve thousand unencumbered, but you expect to, to spend sixty-three. So we're overspending the budget on that line, is that correct? Like, how are we doing that?
So again, this is, this is from a, I think, an October report?
Yeah, no, okay, let me, let me finish. So like, let's do the supply line. If we budgeted sixty-five-
Where do you get to sixty-five?
That's what we approved on our budget last year.
Okay, last year.
But right now, the budget's sitting at almost thirteen-five in supplies. There's unencumbered seven fifty-two, but you think you're gonna spend seventeen, so where's the monies coming from when we're overspending these budgets?
So, and, and that's what makes these so complicated to read, because what's happening is you're getting the full report, the total, like supplemental appropriations, the re-appropriations from authority finance. So even though, so I'm gonna say this part, and then I gotta follow it up with something else. Even though you approved sixty-five, okay, at some point in the year, this is what has happened. More money has been put in that line, whether by council approval or by the auditor.
But somebody spent it, because he had to, because the expenditures are gonna be almost three times the sixty-five hundred.
Correct.
So it, it had to be moved there if it got spent.
Yes.
Okay.
I come back to, I don't know who spent it, I could tell you that, I could tell you where the PO came from, not right now, I'd have to get into authority finance.
Well, I would, I will tell you what I liked about the old format, and I'm not saying we have to go back to it, but I had, we had like four years of history. So in supplies, we were typically spending, you know, three thousand, five thousand, four thousand, five thousand. And in one year, we go to fifteen, so some things happened there. Are, are we knowing what's going on behind the scenes in those areas that in one year, supply has tripled?
Right. So I will also tell you this, you were not getting the full picture with that last, with those budget sheets. These things were still happening, and you were just getting the-
Well, I'm looking at actual twenty-twenty-one, actual twenty-twenty-two, actual twenty-twenty-three.
You were looking at actual appropriations.
No, these were actual expenses for those years. When we were looking at building twenty-twenty-four's budget, he already, we already had twenty-ones done, twenty-two was done.
The totality of the expenses.
Correct, correct. So you're going into that three to five thousand dollar range, and then in one-
You're talking about like prior years, we could, I could show you that.
And I'm not picking on this line, I'm just saying, I noticed when I looked at these, comparing them, it happened in a lot of areas that I, I get where budgets don't sit where we approved them, obviously, people spent more money in that line.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if behind the scenes, as these things are happening, and you're looking into this, have we figured out why in this area it tripled, and in other areas, we way underspent? I see like we're not even gonna budget for phone, but historically, we paid some phone out of this, this. So there's, you know, those kinda things.
That was easier to explain, but yeah. The others, damn it, I'd love to tell you.
I, I know, and I'm not, I'm not picking on any line or just the sheet, I'm just saying, I saw that happening a lot, like-
And you'll find that happen?
You, you guys have seven hundred and fifty dollars left, but you think you're gonna end up spending about another four. So that tells me, yeah.
No, I-
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
We know what we would- We know what we would anticipate to spend in the goal, moving forward, and that's why, as we move into twenty-six, twenty-seven, what you're going to see is these lines shift away. So next year, for example, you won't have unencumbered and, you, you probably won't have that unencumbered line. You're going to have the twenty-four budget line, you're going to have the expenses as of blank, and then you're going to have the twenty-five budget line. And then you're going to have the twenty-six, you know, basically the way that we have the twenty-five budget appropriation request, you're going to have the twenty-six budget appropriation request.
Do you call them instead of line?
Yeah, columns, yeah, you're correct.
Well, and I'll, and I'll shut up because we're half hour in and we're not getting very far, but generally, here's what I see through my lens, and it's just because I look at this stuff all day long. So in the, on this sheet, last year, it was around one hundred and forty-six thousand that we approved as a budget.
Yeah.
And you're telling me that just this year, we're going to spend almost one hundred and sixty-two. When I looked at them, there were, there were areas that went up twenty or thirty percent over what we budgeted last year and what's being proposed. So that's just making me wonder what's happening in that year that's making things go like that.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll listen.
I'll try and add. Well, first off, I mean, I honestly, with the communication stuff, I was back and forth, but I can honestly say, out of everybody here, I probably pushed the envelope on talking about communication than anybody else. So I think, I'm, I'm, I think I agree with Mel on that, that if this is a good idea, which I think you guys believe and it works, I'm, I'm for that. Without having to post it, whatever we can do to do that. As long as we, with what you guys have proposed, I'm fine with that, because that is something the city needs to do. And I think there's been a lot of good steps forward with that. And then the other thing, and I'll say, is this budget stuff is a lot harder this year. And I think council feels that even more, not that you guys don't feel responsible, but council feels probably a, a big part of that also, because we've got to make that final decision of what to approve. And with what has happened this year in the auditor's office and what the findings are from this report, there's been a lot of stuff that happened that should not have happened in the city. And I guess I look at that like, can I get an example? Because I beat Tanner up on this whole thing with the Philly playground equipment.
You sure did.
There was supposed to be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars there for that.
Two hundred.
Two hundred, it was never there. I questioned the old auditor about that early on in the process. He told me it was there. I went and met with him, he says, nope, it's right here on this line. We have five of us in a meeting over a four-month period, thinking the money's there, and huh...
Seven thousand dollars left.
Comes down, there's nothing left, it's not even there. And so it appears to me what's happened is things have moved around in lines that maybe we didn't know, or the lines weren't the real numbers to begin with in the first place. So I guess what I'm getting at is, is I, I do believe and I trust that council's going to be, do its due diligence. But, you know, we've got the treasurer, the auditor, safety service director, and the mayor, with department heads working together on a budget, trying to figure it out, while we've still got other issues to fix. And all of those guys out here, not up here, they're putting their entire name, job responsibilities, and reputation on the line. And so I do think that they're going to do their very best to present us the best they can to us as council to make the decisions. But you're right, because why does that stuff just go up?
Well, and if...
But we don't, and sometimes I think we might not know the reason yet, because we got to get into the system.
Because if two hundred went to seven, but this six went to seventeen, so there, there could be some stuff behind the scenes that answered that. It's starting to be a, a bigger picture for me.
Yeah, and so I just want the community to know that the, the, this city is working very hard to make sure there is a responsible, well-thought-out budget. And everybody is putting themselves out there on this. And I think about this, it's been very, it has been very transparent. And things have moved pretty quick. But everybody's working very hard, but there are things that have changed, just like that playground equipment. And I'm looking, and I see the same thing there. And, but I, but when I would go talk with our old auditor about stuff, I would see those same things, and that's what brought, that's what raised my hair in the back of my neck.
Well, I guess my only caution would be to look at the history. If, if we're typically been trending in that five, six thousand dollar range, just because you have a year where we spend seventeen doesn't mean we need to budget fifteen this year. Maybe we do. I'm just saying, there were, there were times that really stuck out to me that, okay, I see this trend, and then it went up, and now we're going to stick with that up. There went your playground equipment, really quickly.
Some of this can be attributed to the board, to the memberships in the boards, which did not necessarily come out of the mayor's budget in this particular...
This was a bad sheet to start on, because it was just the first example. It wasn't just, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I'm not picking on this sheet, I'm just saying it happened a lot.
That's a good point, conceptually, I think we can use that moving forward, because they get a lot more complicated than that.
And I would like to add, based on, so next year, I would like to see what, what was, what we spend in twenty-twenty-four, the final answer.
Right.
So I would like to see at least a year or two.
I think some history is good to see those trends.
And I realize, we've turned the page in the auditor's office, we, we are cleaning things up. So, you know, next year, though, I would like to see the twenty-twenty-four spent.
And hopefully, we can start building data into these sheets. That way, you can get a better picture of, you know, and you have years that are aberrations. And I, I come back to that networking account. It's huge this year. Why? Well, a hundred thousand of it is supposed to go to the court because of an unfunded mandate from the state. What's going to happen next year? It's going to shrink a hundred thousand dollars, I can tell you that right now. We don't need over a half a million dollars in the networking account every year. That made me about fall out of the chair.
We're, we're also doing a lot of exchanges between fund to fund to try and get things paid. So Rob and Peter to pay Paul, and that's messing with the numbers as well. So when we're looking, the way that I see that Tanner has done this budget, maybe we're over-appropriating it, but next year, we'll be able to say, okay, we actually spent it on this category, and we actually have these numbers. We'll have a better idea what it's going to be following year, and we can appropriate it more appropriately.
Yeah. I like that.
We've got two pages so far.
Yep, two.
We'll be here until tomorrow at nine AM. Yeah. All right. Speaking of blowing up a budget, all right. Go on to the auditor's salary. Or auditor's budget. All right, so we got the auditor's salary, we got auditors, deputies, and clerks. Coming back to a question, I think, that was asked in an email thread about hiring different positions or whatnot. There was one position that was created, the first deputy auditor, early in last budget. That position was not hired, however, as a, as a salaried position. However, what you'll see is the funds that were used for that salary were used to fill another clerk's position in the auditor's office, and those wages were lifted. So while that particular position that council created was not filled, those funds were used. And there existed three clerk positions, and then the new position that was created. So all three clerks have been filled, yes? All three clerk posi, yeah. So there are three clerks now in the auditor's office, when it was down to one.
Thank you.
Yeah, that just, we find the last one. We have a first deputy auditor, we have a deputy auditor, those two are basically running things right now. We have an assistant deputy auditor that's been with us a few weeks now, she's doing wonderful. And then we just got a, a part-time de, assistant deputy auditor.
Yeah, so, series of interns in there doing some, you know, general office work, and it's bumping and a-banging down there. So, as you got PERS lines, do supplies and incidentals, why is that so high? Well, that is where we put the cash for, Paul, you want to explain your budget?
No, he doesn't.
All right, never mind.
You're basically paying everybody's retirement out of this one line, is that what's just happening?
No.
No? No, the PERS, I thought you were talking about.
Oh, yes, yeah, PERS, yeah. And we've got a larger PERS account to pay for everybody else's PERS and thirty-six hundred. You're going to see, per, or thirty-six hundred is a lot larger of a line, but this covers a lot of everybody in, in that one.
I, I think that do supplies and incidentals was, the auditor's office has a lot of old furniture, and it just, we need some new stuff.
That's what that, so there is, that line will go back down at the end of the year.
So you're saying you're moving some of the retirement to other places, is that what I heard you say?
Yes, in this particular line, I think what happened in the prior years was that there were a lot of, even what the former auditor referred to himself as hidey holes. We've tried to eliminate as many hidey holes as possible. But what is happening here is this particular PERS line is for the PERS in that office. And we've tried to keep that for elected officials, we have tried to keep that in their office.
Uh, no. There is no way that's for just that office.
So then there is a larger PERS account in the thirty-six hundred that is supposed to cover other employees that are under safety service.
There's no PERS here.
I know.
You're saying there's no PERS?
No PERS under mayor, so obviously...
Yep, so that's where, if you hop, I don't want you to hop around too much, that way we get out of, out of whack. But if you go into the thirty-six hundred, that's where another PERS line is, which is significantly larger. So you're going to see PERS here and there throughout in the different offices, if there is a significantly larger PERS line in the thirty-six hundred. You have something to say.
That's all right, I'll email you later, because that's a bigger conversation.
All right.
That's two hundred and eighty-five thousand in the thirty-six.
Now, you're looking at, you are looking at the paper sheet that has since changed.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, let's stick with auditor, here we go.
Yep, so... Nevertheless, there we go. Seventy-five, seventy-five, ten for bank charges. Telephone has been wiped out again, that is being carried over in the networking account, so we don't have to use thirty-two lines to pay a telephone bill. OML dues, services received accrual accounts, that seventy-five is to assist not only with the every, if you look, again, in the thirty-six, I keep referring to the thirty-six hundred, that's a miscellaneous section. That is a catch-all. We had a section for the state examiner's fee in that. We figured that's going to come out of the auditor's office anyway, may as well put it in the auditor's office. So services received, that's typically about fifty-five thousand dollars a year. That's what it was appropriated for last year. It's likely, I think he's already got the contract set up for that for next year. So that's where we put it in the auditor's office.
That, that's also for our counseling services.
He's also, yeah, contracting out with Clark, Schaefer, and Hackett, who actually did additional services through our annual report this year. Training, travel, and expenses, why did that go up so much? Well, I'll tell you, we got four new people working in the auditor's office. This is going to be a year of investment. And there's funds for the actual annual report, the preparation itself. Not the annual audit, but the annual report.
Which will be very important for our bond rating.
And then finally, transfer to bond retirement. That's set at fifty thousand dollars. Why is that set at fifty thousand dollars? Well, that's about what we paid this year.
What's our bond rating right now?
It's as good as it gets for our size of municipality, and I can't remember, is it doubling plus? Or is it, I can't remember what the...
I couldn't tell you. We're about to find out. We got to turn in our report to Moody's by the end of the year. Is that right?
I already, I already turned it in.
You already turned it in.
They, they accepted the draft.
So, and that happened today. So we got our draft back today. It was expected in October. We got it today. Hundred and twenty-nine pages. And now we pay for David's beach house. It's a very small beach house. All right. So now we move over into the law director's salary, or, I'm sorry, his fund. So we got the salary, the clerks, do supplies and incidentals. Wiped out his tel, telephone as well. Law books and furtherance of justice. Again, that encumbrance, it looks like that we haven't paid that out, that is typically paid out toward the end of the year. Other legal duties. Training, travel, and expenses. And then computerization has been wiped out, because that will be covered in networking. Questions in that one? And feel free to write your, as Tammy's going to hit me with a war and peace-sized document. But write them down.
What are we getting for the hundred thousand, hundred thousand plus next year we weren't getting this year?
Say what?
What are we getting for the hundred thousand plus? We're going from four thirty-eight to six forty-two. What are we getting for that? What, that, what's another other thousand get us?
Where's, where's the hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase, basically?
Oh, I see.
Well, I think you're seeing a, one, you're seeing an increase in these clerks' staff, or salary lines there. And this is a question for Rob. But it appears other legal duties have gone, and, and here's, here's something that I think that just needs addressed. Early on, we appropriate dollars, and they look, I mean, you know, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, and then now we're asking for six hundred and forty-two thousand. Well, you can look right now, the twenty-twenty-four budget appropriations for four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars turned into five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. So we spent more than what we asked for, and that's a thing that happens across the entire budget. So my question to you is, and, I mean, tell me I'm wrong. If we know that we're going to spend more, and this was some, something that we dealt with, actually, I think last year, I would come in and tell every one of you when we had these council meetings with the administration, I think you can even see in that line, it would say, departmental request, administrative request, and appropriation. And you would see a significant percentage cut. The departmental request was the same as the administrative request. The administrative request was the auditor's request. So we had already talked through with the department heads and agreed upon what their plans and their programs and their projects were.
But we had to fit within revenues, too.
We had to fit it within someone's, what that individual believed was right for that department.
But we also had to fit within expected revenues.
Okay. And then ultimately, that would be shifted over, and we would pay more. And sometimes, that, that individual would say, don't worry, I've got it. And then suddenly, a series of then-and-nows would show up. Personnel. See here, this is a grant-funded position, the victims, victim advocate. Seventy percent of this is covered by a grant, only thirty percent of this is covered by the general fund. I do not know, oh, howdy. I do not know the life cycle of this grant. That would be a question for Rob. But at least this year, seventy percent of this is covered by a grant.
And prior to this, it was covered completely by the grant.
It may have been, I'm not, not sure. I believe eventually it does phase out, similarly to the J-Rig grants, you're going to see that, too. Yeah. All right, income tax, you're going to see a significant increase here. Got your administrator and your employees, do supplies and incidentals about the same. Telephone's wiped out, it's moved over to the networking. Training, travel, and expenses is the same. Computer maintenance is also wiped out, it's been moved over to networking. Income tax refunds exploded. Why's that? Well, because we keep trying to find more money to move over to income tax refunds, because it was underfunded, it was not met at the request of the income tax department the prior year. And now we've been trying to... And now we've been trying to move it over there to match what they need. So again, if you know that you're gonna have to pay that out, why would you underappropriate it in the first place? And then their income tax equipment's matching prior year. Mr. Stoller, would you like to comment on that at all?
Well, I'll just say the, the income tax refunds are what they are. There's really, it's not under our control, but I will say it's, whatever that 425 is, or whatever the number ends up being, it comes in in revenue, and then it just goes back out. But the reason, I think, the government makes you do this instead of through the revenue line is because it's in different years, you're paying it through the revenue in one year, and then you pay it back out in another year. So you've got a mismatch, but that really is beyond anybody's control, and you don't know who's gonna ask for refund, who's gonna apply it to the next year. And through the previous budget processes, that number would get reduced or changed or whatever from what was requested in the initial working document.
So can I ask you, as a treasurer, in prior years, did you work, have you worked more closely this year on the budget with the administration as far as the revenue coming in with income tax?
Three hundred, quarter million, quarter million, so this is a big jump. So, and again, this is one of those ones that kind of stuck out to me, so if you look in the past, it was in the three hundred to quarter million dollar range. So this was a big year, if, if you're in the four hundred and some thousand, that was a jump.
Last year, the revenue would have been overstated, this year, it's going back out.
No, I'm just saying, when, like, I can understand why people thought, well, we should probably budget in around three hundred thousand-ish, because that's what it usually is, and then it came in significantly higher than that.
This definitely was a heavier refund year, I think a lot of that, David could probably back me up on that one, that was probably because a lot of the business overpayments that we were refunding back, is that correct?
Some business, but mostly this is personal.
Okay. So there's that.
We got another hundred and ten thousand that I was gonna bring to you next meeting.
To move.
To transfer into refunds to pay out.
Should bring us to that 432 number, or an additional?
For this, for this year, so they can get up to what they need.
So, that's what I'm asking, you'll, it'll be on top of the 432 that you got expected to spend this year? Or is it included?
Yeah, it will be on top of that, yeah.
And we doubled. Wow, okay.
I didn't get any of that.
No.
No, I had to pay, yeah. All right, take my pound of flesh.
The graph, the graph that the treasurer shared with us also shows that the business tax, when last year they overpaid, and they had just applied it to this, or they were, that's, they applied that, so if you see that green part of the, of the, that's where the real hit came, in terms of
From where the no.
Withholdings were up.
Were up, yeah.
That's our bread and butter, withholdings were way up, it's just the business tax came way down.
We anticipate that next year as well. All right, moving on to the municipal court judge's salary, or, I keep doing that, that's the first one. The municipal court, now there are several of these buckets, and I will add that I have, while I think this one's okay, I do have some changes to make in some of the probation lines, they're not radical changes, and actually, some of them indicate a carryover, so, good news. But here we go, judge's salary, why is it so small?
He got, comes from three parts.
Right, yeah.
State, county, and this is our, this is our box.
Well, you took my joke, Bruce. That's the only thing I had, I was gonna say that he was just a generous guy, and just gave back to the community, not so, not so much. No, so that's our portion, and then same thing with the clerk's salary, and then there's your, your deputy clerks. The administrative assistant does not come out of this, is not actually funded at all out of here. There's PERS, you'll see that that was significantly overfunded this year, we've been able to pull that out of, been able to bring that down to what we anticipate actually paying. Bank, do supplies and incidentals, there's that, bank charges, telephone we've wiped, law library, merit court, that's a more accurate picture, I've already changed that, as well as the youth assistance project, those are both carryovers. And then training, travel, and expenses, you got fifteen hundred bucks, ask for training, travel, and expenses, and then computer maintenance, nothing there, however, I will mention, I'll go ahead and point this out, the state of Ohio has required, with their infinite wisdom, an unfunded mandate for e-filing for municipal courts. There are about two companies in the state of Ohio, that operate in the state of Ohio, that can actually do that. This costs $330,000. Nice of them, huh? Yeah, we're in the wrong biz, Janice. So, the courts, computer maintenance fees, they've been able to scrape together some cash that's got them down to about $270,000. Where's the rest of it come from? Well, that's for you fellers to determine.
So it's 330,000 just for Mount Vernon, Ohio?
Just for the municipal court. Yeah. Between two companies, and I will go ahead and tell you
We're in the wrong business.
That we're not, yeah, that we're not, I don't think it's any secret that even with the current calendar that we're on, we're gonna be out of compliance for about two months, because it's two companies, they can't possibly
So, is this an annual cost, then?
No, actually, the, yeah, and Tammy's probably about sick of hearing me say this, but the first year of implementation is the most expensive cost, and then it actually, it's less expensive than what we're doing right now. But, so it'll be actually a cost savings at some point, and we chose to go with the same company, it's called Elevant or Courtview, that the, or the common police court uses. So that's some pretty good, you know, integration there, problem is getting there, so. I would say, hey, we'll find a way around it, but nope. And again, that's why you'll see there's cash in the networking account for that, and then also, that's part of one of our computer upgrades in the capital budget. If you would rather restructure it in a different way, I'm open to hearing that, but that was my idea.
So the unfunded mandates in here were covered, judges covered?
The judge is covered based off of this budget, if you choose to take it a different route, you know, figure whatever you want, but we gotta do it. That, that one's not.
They have to.
Yeah.
Does the county have to pay this as well?
County's already e-filing.
Okay.
We're using the same system.
You guys work with the judge, of course, and he's satisfied.
Yes, and we did ask the county to assist us, since while this is the Mount Vernon Municipal Court, it has countywide jurisdiction, and they told us no.
He was looking at the camera.
Yeah.
This is an interesting county with how the court system is laid out with municipal court.
I'm being saucy today, I'm tired, I'm hungry. All right. Any questions about that? Okay. All right, municipal court bailiff. Pretty straightforward?
So just, just to make sure, to state that these, basically all the salary lines are higher, because there are things that we have approved this last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Tammy pointed this one out, that this was a carbon copy of, that was a goof on our end. But luckily, we didn't miss anything, and we actually got to take it down, because the county pays for jury and witness fees, and that's a big fat goose egg, so nothing there. Seven sixty witness and jury fees, we're good to go. Seventeen eighty probation officer and clerk, this is where I still have some work to do, but ultimately, what you're gonna see here is we got a lot of special dockets, whether that's probation dockets or mental health dockets, a lot of that is receiving from either state programs or grants. We've got electronic monitoring charges with the, which the judge has a lot of discretion over, and that's carryfor, a lot of that's carryforward. There is one thing on there, which was a donation at one point from Food for the Hungry, so they could use it for like, I think, merit court, a merit court event, they've never used it, so they wanna give it back to Food for the Hungry, it is $17.35, so.
Good guys.
Yeah, so. In one pocket and back into the other.
So whose beach house does that go for?
Goes for the crackers in one beach house. Yeah. So, any questions on that one? That, I'll, I'll finish that up tomorrow morning, and then you'll have an accurate view, and I'll be done with that one. This is a probation officer, seventeen eighty-five, that one is empty, we've zeroed it out, I worked with Dave and Joel, and said, go ahead and spend the cash out of that one, and we'd close the books on that one. Seventeen eighty-six. This is really where probation operates. Got your employee lines, your PERS. Employee insurance, some of these are carryforwards. Those things that they haven't spent. I've got a hands-down course, some anger management, substance abuse incentives, things like that, or not incentives to abuse substances, incentives to not abuse substances, I gotta clarify what I mean by that. Any questions on that one? Okay.
Why did the probation officer, why did I decrease as well as drug testing?
Say that again, Bruce.
The probation officer decreased, and so did drug testing decrease, why is that?
That was at their request, I don't know. The drug testing decrease, is that what you're asking about?
It's gone from 15,700 to 6,000, and the probation officers went from 81,000 to 57,000.
Couldn't tell ya, that was the request.
I have a feeling they'll come back with changes, because we originally budgeted forty for probation, and then it spent an eighty-two, so they may just be thinking they're gonna get other money to offset or something.
Yeah, or they could pay it out of a different docket, or something like that, that, one of those, one of those special dockets could carry it, I'm not sure. I can certainly ask, if you wanna send me an email, make sure I get the question asked, happy to do that. Seventeen eighty-seven, this is the J-Rig grant, we have burned out on that one, so. I'm gonna go ahead and, Matt, do you wanna add up in that corner, seventeen eighty-seven probation officer J-Rig? Now'd be a good time to remind you all and anybody listening slash watching, you can see this section, or in the comments where it says hide.
Seventeen eighty-seven is the number.
Yeah.
Does it come first or after?
Yeah.
First.
Yeah, just type it as it says it down in that tab. What hide means is, in the authority finance system, that's our budgetary software, we will be hiding the line, but all the data is still there. So what that's gonna do is make it easier for us as we go in through and write POs and whatnot, we're not just bombarded with, you know, fifty lines. So, that's more of a direction for the auditor's office after the budget's passed, for them to go in and just kinda clean stuff up. So, it's a, kind of a general example of this, I was an online teacher, and after one of my years of courses were done, I would clean them out and hide them, but they were still available to me. And then I would create the next year's courses, so that's what we mean by hide. Can always go back and look at it. All right, merit system administrator, so if you remember, we combined civil service and HR, they're under the same umbrella. So we've been able to wipe out the actual cost of the merit system administrator, like, we don't actually pay an individual to be the merit system administrator. What really, what you're seeing now is costs for testing, which, why is testing so much? Well, one assessment for, like, a captain's test for the fire department's a good example for this, that one assessment was about $10,000. Again, Janice, we're in the wrong business. But that one assessment, ten thousand bucks, our goal, and then we've got some civil service legal fees, now if we need to go in and ask, you know, we did go through a termination right now, and we had to talk about arbitration, we may end up in arbitration, we are definitely in a legal suit, now, won't go in any more detail than that. However, if we have to go down things like that, that's what that's for, so. We're not a suit, but a legal, you know, we're in that conversation. So, training, travel, and expenses, we have a brand-new, have a brand-new HR generalist, so gonna make sure that she is aware of all the, like, sending her to the SERB conference or the OPERA conference, wanna make sure that she not only is our HR generalist and our, you know, civil service person, but also knows what she's talking about. We are going to, and I'll go ahead and point this out since we're gonna get there, it's kind of relevant to this, the safety and compliance, and safety, compliance, and training officer, I have axed that request. So I believe that with the new Instructure Canvas software, which Tammy, you may be familiar with, we can, between the HR generalist and myself and the department heads, we can add enough of the safety, training, and compliance stuff in that system, and we can manage all the safety training that is required by BWC, because we just went through a safety audit through BWC, I think that we can manage that through that system and not require another person. So, I think that's doable. In the future, should Mount Vernon grow and more employees and more become incumbent upon us by, you know, the overlords at BWC, I don't know, will it get out of hand? I don't know, we'll find out, but for now, I think, you know, as we work out this budget system and, you know, have a new path forward, I don't think we need that immediately, I think we can handle it with the new system that we've got in place. And I think this merit system administrator, if you will, the HR generalist, will be able to assist with that. Questions on that? Okay. That will also bring the cost of testing down, the reason I wanted to bring that up now is civil service tests can actually be created by us and operated through that system, which will save thousands of dollars, because we won't have to go through, like, these third-party testing systems, we can build them ourselves, we can execute them ourselves, we can do, we can use a computer lab at one of the universities and be done, so. Looking at a couple of you guys, I know a guy, or two.
For a fee, just kidding.
For a small fee, see how that works? And that's how we built
I do not control that line, trust me.
That's how we built Mel and Jay's beach house, all right. All right. This one is misleading.
I would change, I would change that to just police, by the way, instead of policemen.
Yeah. Whoa, all right. Got all woke on me there, Mel, all right.
Done, I heard ya.
So, nineteen hundred is actually, I think, before the former, or before we voted in the income tax, the half percent income tax, funding for police and fire, this is the line that we, the fund that we use to take care of police. Now, it is a graveyard for the cash. Now, it is a graveyard for the cash that we rolled through for K-9 expenses and PAC United. So that's what that is. Those funds are actually not coming out of the general fund. They have been funded by either, well, just mostly donations, yeah. So again, problematic to say something is carried forward by the general fund, but we're gonna be loose with definitions tonight. Same goes for the impound lot, nineteen fifty. So these are all covered by towing fees and sales. They actually make significantly more than twelve thousand five hundred dollars on, particularly with the sales on gov deals. Questions on that one? I know Paul's gonna have questions on it.
Yeah.
You just, you just hush. All right.
We need the money there to pay the towing company, then it comes back.
Yeah. All right. This one, uh, we actually, I need to talk to Jason Booth about a more accurate figure, so this may change. It may actually go down. This is, we do not have a humane officer, but we pay, we contract out with the county to cover, uh, part of that. Again, as Tammy has pointed out, these are kind of wonky numbers as they've transitioned back and forth. I mean, we got a negative there. So I need to know exactly what we're paying, both for salary and for training and travel slash expenses. I think that's just kind of a catch-all. We'll figure out what exactly the county's expecting and then we'll shift, but that's just a, a fee that goes off to the county. Similarly, the way that we do with the, um, health department, or same way. Okay. Me! All right. All right, so salary line, administrative assistant, telephones wiped out, safety officer, if you're looking at your paper, it's still there. If you look up there, I've yellowed it out, wiped it out. Services received is still there. That is mostly, has been used for legal bills or, and this year for Clemens Nelson for payroll-related things. It looks insanely high. That is because when we transitioned, or when we moved that figure for NeoGov, that one eighty-six for NeoGov and for, um, McDaniels, that's what made that huge jump. So obviously, when it took a tank, it came back to the original appropriation. The city inspector, hold up, hold that thought, and we'll talk about that in a second. Training, travel and expenses, it's the same, little under actually, I don't know where that one hundred and five came from. Whatever. Could not tell you how, I don't know. All right. Contingencies, this is another one of those things where I have, throughout the entirety of the budget, I have taken away folks', um, deductibles, appropriations, things like that, consolidated and talked to everybody that has a fleet and said, "You need to, uh, budget for your fleet's care and maintenance and not over-budget for, you know, things like, oh, what if I ram my car into, or one of the vehicles into a tree or something like that? You know what your care and maintenance costs are gonna be, budget for that. I will budget for contingencies." And I've cut it back just to try to trim the fat a little bit and just said, you know, if I've got, at one point it was up to one hundred, I pulled it back to seventy-five. I know that I have that for the year, and I just cut it up into quarters and say, you know, this is, this is our safe zone and this is for the entirety of all the safety and service departments under our purview. So, right now, you know, we over-appropriate through every department and essentially we leave a lot of appropriations on the table because of that. We get to the end of the year and we've only used thirty thousand of this, well, then we got forty-five that we can move into whatever we need to move. And we don't have to go pilfering other people's pockets when they have projects that they need to complete or whatnot. We know that that's there. Does that become a slush fund at that point? Yeah, I guess. So let's pop back up to city inspector. Question's been asked, "Why was the ZEO never hired?" The answer is, "With what time?" So, the need for a ZEO still exists. That could be, easily be a full-time job. Who's doing it now? Well, technically it's supposed to be me. So what do I do in my capacity as ZEO? Send angry letters from time to time. Who does it now? Fifteen percent of that job is done by Greg B. Miller, and the other percentage is done by Lacy Blankenhorn, who does not have time to do it, but still somehow manages to get it done. What her, should her time be better spent doing? Being the development services manager, which she is fantastic at. So I imagine if she had the time to do all of that, she would do a lot more for the city of Mount Vernon. What we have figured out is we do not need to, last year council appropriated sixty thousand dollars for a ZEO. We do not need to do that. What we can do is appropriate thirty thousand dollars in the general fund for the CE, ZEO, and we can appropriate, which we have, we've carved in about thirty-five thousand dollars over the utility, whether it's water and wastewater, see here, back here. We've got the neat, not NeoGov, OpenGov system, there are too many GOVs. We got an OpenGov system coming online for, with fog and backflow requirements from the EPA. Those inspections will be taking place. We'll have to have somebody that actually knows what they're talking about going out and doing the inspections, but there's a lot of administrative duties that come with that, that these guys simply don't have time to do. In comes the city inspector. There are fees associated with that, there are fees associated, inspection fees associated with being the ZEO. We feel that most, if not all, of the general fund, uh, portion of this salary will be covered by those fog and backflow fees and those zoning, or those zoning fees. On top of that, Greg B. Miller has announced publicly now that he will be leaving at the end of February. I have talked to Greg and we think that instead of replacing him just as a PMEO, that property maintenance enforcement officer, we can probably sit down and retune about how that works as well. And instead of replacing him directly as a property maintenance enforcement officer, we can have an assistant city inspector. And, uh, that position, whether it's part-time or full-time, that can be discussed and, you know, we'll incorporate that, Tammy's committee, and we'll have that conversation then. But a lot of the drive time can be done by that assistant city inspector reporting back to the city inspector, and the administrative duties can kind of function in that way. And then that's where we have a conversation with PD as well, because that's where Greg and I discussed, you know, you don't want to get too many cooks in the kitchen simultaneously. There are some things that PD can do as far as, you know, reporting or, you know, checking cars that have been sitting in the road for too long or just different things like that, that do fall under the purview of property maintenance, but aren't necessarily zoning violations or especially utility inspections. So, as we kind of figure out a way to, you know, consolidate a lot of the zoning or inspection things, property maintenance zoning inspections under one city inspector and, uh, you know, really make that a, a net gain for the city that makes sense and we have somebody to go to as opposed to, well, who handles that? Well, Lacy does this part-time and then Greg kind of does that, but Tanner's actually the one that's supposed to write the letter. What?
So a quick question on that, I know, are we, are we enforcing our law, are we enforcing our laws?
Well, if you want to go to the next tab.
Enough and actually collecting the fees.
So, we haven't been assessing the fees as well as we could, but we've been working on, yes, that's.
And we need, I, you know what, that's something I think we need, I want to see reports on that.
We absolutely can.
We need to, we have laws on the books. Either enforce them for people who are abusing them or we get them off the books, because it's a waste of everybody's time if we're actually not following through on that.
Agreed. So Greg has done a phenomenal job of bringing down the violations with property maintenance.
I report things to him often.
Yes, and he does a fantastic job at that. On top of that, I do want to say, I think sometimes people don't know where his limits are, so he can't go into people's yards and, or, you know, even lift his camera over a fence or anything like that, which I don't think you want him to, I think there's a limit on that. There should be. There's also, like, engineering has done fantastic work with that iWork system. We've had an opportunity for people to really engage online where we don't have to have lines of people in here getting permits. We've been able to collect a lot of that and we do have that data, I think, Brian or Matt. Yeah, they can get that to you. OpenGov is, replaces our Brightly system or our asset essentials, and that's really gonna kind of be the, the nexus that brings utilities, engineering and, uh, public works together as that, like, public reporting stuff. And it's the EPA that has, we've known that we need to do this for a long time, but here comes the big guys to tell us, "Oh no, you're, you're gonna do it," in our timeline. And, uh, that's where Aaron has been very aggressive about coming in and getting those fog, that's fats, oils and greases, and, uh, the backflow regulations in place. So, again, similarly to the court, you're gonna do it, okay, well, who's gonna do it? And we've, you know, been addressing that slowly, but it's figuring out how we can restructure this and make sure that it's effectively done. So I agree, but.
No, I agree with Mel, because if you've got those, you're not enforcing them, shouldn't have them.
Yeah.
But I do like, because I did talk about this with the last city, with the old city auditor, I, it's good to cobble together a position with certain responsibilities that you have accountability.
Yeah.
At the same time, using the different funds to fund it.
Yeah.
That's what we did at the state all the time.
Yeah, you don't necessarily have to burden one fund as much, yeah, especially, and again, we think it'll be, using the revenues from those fees, I think that it'll cover the cost of, at least the general fund. And we'll see, I mean, the, the fog and backflow fees are, are gonna be new, so, a, as will the OpenGov system, and reminder, the OpenGov and NeoGov are different things. But, um, yeah. So that'll be a new thing for us this year, but I think having a city inspector on, I mean, we had already funded the ZEO, so there shouldn't be anything new, but.
Just a reminder, so before Aaron started, we eliminated the, uh, pre-treatment coordination position at the wastewater plant. And so part of this will be, we eliminated that job and we did not bring it back until the director had a chance to build his team and reorganize. So the savings, that position will be recreated, but it's only gonna be partly funded out of utility. And it'll make more sense. It did not make sense the way it was set up. It wasn't effective. He didn't have the right tools. So Aaron's building the right tools and the position will come back and it'll, it'll help everybody, because three people driving around town only looking at one thing doesn't make a lot of sense. One person driving around town looking at three things makes a lot more sense to us. So, yeah, so this is almost, I don't know, a couple of years in the works of bringing, bringing the, bringing it back together.
Yeah. This also gives us, without dropping a bomb here, this also gives us an opportunity to build future things, if you will. So, whether that's, when you have a city inspector and assistant city inspector, then you have an opportunity for, uh, you know, building and zoning department without it being a building and zoning department. So, do with that what you will. All right. Human resources, same sort of situation. The only thing that really radically changes here is that, um, the salary increased, increased ever so slightly, but, uh, the HR generalist actually received a cut. Due supplies and incidentals, about the same. Telephone's gone. Services received has increased, but you'll see that, uh, those testing numbers have decreased from around the city. So we're consolidating. HR is gonna handle, like, the background checks, drug screens, those sort of things, fit-for-duty exams, which one of those is a thousand dollars, so it's, you know, it's still sixty thousand, I, I, this is mind-blowing, but sixty thousand actually may not be enough. So, but. Workforce, travel, expenses, um, up there, if you're using the paper, it's not reflected, but up on the screen, we cut the workforce development fund. So the workforce development fund is basically like the, you know, um, well, it's the, uh, the appreciation, employee appreciation banquet and things like that, swag bags, stuff like that. We cut that in half, it was set at ten thousand, we cut it down to five. We believe that we can work, uh, work out some public sponsorships, donations, things like that. So, there are some rules that we have to pay attention to when it comes to that, but, um, we can, we do it with PAC, we do it with the K-9s, I think this'll, can follow the same rules, so. All right, property maintenance enforcement officer, coming back to that, uh, Greg will be retiring, this position will slide back so that, uh, we move that line back to fifty-three. If it goes down to a, a part-time employee, it could even slide back down. So that, that'll still have to be more of a conversation that we have, it'll just, it'll just depend if that individual also is working on fogs and backflow or anything else that we decide to, you know, kind of broaden that scope, fees will help offset that cost as well. Due supplies and incidentals is fifteen, it's less than last appropriation, which I don't know what the actual appropriation is, but cut the telephone. Maintenance of equipment does, sits at four thousand, services received was cut by three thousand, I think we can handle that. There's no computer maintenance and there's no, uh, travel and expenses. All right. Director of Engineering, Brian, you wanna, wanna do this?
All right, so.
Radically.
I don't think it changed anything, yep. Okay. Yeah, so we're, we're broken up a little bit, so a few people have individual lines, myself, um, our assistant engineer and our, kind of random name change depending on the day, our project engineer, our previously known as assistant to the city engineer, which is Jason Epley, um, and then everyone else, assistants and clerks, that is, our, all of our union employees, and then Lacy as a development services is in, in there with the, uh, union employees. Oh, you did break her out? Okay, so you've got her down here, yeah. But you, okay, yeah, so that's a new line, development services is broken out now. It was, for some reason, it was always just in with the union folks, so he did break that out. Uh, we include a little bit of budget for overtime, because our union folks occasionally have some overtime, and then we have our, our student workforce. Uh, this year, the student workforce helped with the, um, asset manager plan at the water plant, and they helped with the, um, lead and copper mapping, which are like, you know, a little bit of a, "Hey, surprise, you have so many months to do this." So we put a group of folks together, worked with Aaron to get those things busted out. Let's see. Uniforms, our boots and safety equipment.
Where did you mention? I don't, you mentioned overtime, I don't see.
So it's included in the, the five, one, 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 two. So those, those folks are, everyone else is not get overtime.
So there's no exempt people or non-management people?
So that line account.
Not in that.
That line account, since, since now you have five, one, 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 four, is, uh, development services.
All exempt employees have their own line now.
Yeah.
So they're all broken out for.
Right. So then all the union folks are in the twelve account, including the students. We don't give the students overtime, but they're included in that too.
So, yeah, I'm asking, because I, in those, those updates that we get, I always see one particular individual in that update that you have written in your updates, I believe.
Yeah.
So which line is his?
That's the construction manager.
Yes.
Construction manager.
Yep. So if you remember back to the Clemens and Nelson, they said there were three people they made a mistake on, two of those people have quit, he's the only one left.
Okay.
Now you have made a correction, so since that, you don't see that in the last update, because with the pay banding, we were able to get Jason in, in a more correct salary range.
So his budget, so this construction manager is now budgeted at eighty-three thousand.
That's correct.
So that's his salary.
Well, he's in the, it's in the pay band, so you have.
It's in the pay band, right.
So you have the salary plus the longevity.
No, I get that. I get, I understand longevity.
Right.
I get, but I'm getting that, this is, this is his salary plus longevity, so he's not gonna get overtime.
Yeah, no, nobody. Yeah, he has not gotten overtime for for quite a while. So now he is he is classified as. Yep. All right, rolling on. Let's see, we've got dues incidentals. We've got software, maintenance of equipment. We don't use the planner. I know there's probably questions about the the contract engineering.
Yes.
So the thing we have is a lot of these that we contract at this point are specialty services. So none of us are structural engineers. So the emergency repairs to the parking garage, those are done by a structural company out of Cleveland. As we're working toward the efforts for the police station, we're gonna hire architects. We do not have in-house architects. ODOT has has putting more bridge maintenance on us. So sometimes like you think of the bridge, it's, you know, you've kind of got joint custody, right? Sometimes it's our bridge, sometimes it's their bridge. So.
McDonald's on the weekends.
Like West High Street, we're gonna be mandated to do parapet repairs to the bridge. That requires a structural engineer. So there are things along those lines. I have a very detailed list of West High Street, South Side.
Brian, we also when we were now that we're getting council, now that we're starting to add some more economic development tools like tips and NCA's and so forth, the new the the tips are are going to be.
The NCA, we're running that through this line account. So.
Yeah, just to get get things started, that could be paid back.
But are the tips running through the general fund or are they running through their own fund?
They would say NCA. So the NCA is its own entity, but we are loaning it money. So I'm loaning through this. Yeah, this is our account. We're loaning them money.
Until the NCA generates.
So.
And it's paid back.
So in twenty twenty-four, we budgeted four hundred thousand for this line. Looks like we're gonna spend about four fifty, four sixty. But this is this year's budget is almost three times that. So there are new things running through this line.
Yeah, we plan. I mean, the police station itself, I have those numbers back there, will be over the couple of years, we're gonna spend just almost a million dollars on the design of the police station. So that is a special, large project. You know, if you went all the way back to the Mount Vernon Avenue Bridge, there was another big bump when we designed the the Mount Vernon Avenue Bridge.
So there's some of that history. And to your question, like you often ask, you know, how are we gonna pay for these buildings? So some of the more more inner, you know, initial costs are, you know, design, we've talked about the CMAR costs, we talked about, you know, those initial contract costs with those those guys. So we've built a lot of that in as we look at the police station, which that two million dollar one-time strategic fund money cannot be used for any sort of.
Design, it's construction only.
It's only construction.
Right.
So that's where that is. There's annex, you know, we've looked at the annex and the justice center, gone to the RFQs are out for those two things. So not the annex, but.
So the CMARS are in this contract engineering.
That was.
Part of it.
So that's three that's three times one point five. That's you have four hundred and fifty thousand to six hundred thousand for the CMARS in this line.
Well, but they won't be. We're not not all of that will happen this year. So.
Right.
When we look at, let's look at the courthouse, we promised Mike that we're gonna spend a hundred thousand on revisiting a feasibility study, writing a decision document with an external company. So one, one of that is getting that getting that documented. The CMARS are gonna be happening, are gonna be starting, but they're not gonna be finishing. So this is the, there will be a couple of years of larger investment in outside consultants for these larger projects. And then it'll tail back. You know, we're doing a lot more design in-house. We're doing, I mean, the CAC depot, most of that, we had a little bit of architecture fees, but most of that was designed in-house. You know, we did all of the design for the Memorial Park restroom was in-house or part of the supply contract for that. But there are things that we are not legally allowed to do.
Can we add some sort of note on there, like on your lines? Can we just add something? So it's going forward.
We have a worksheet if you.
So so a big part of this is what Jay said would be the CMARS, lost counsel at the time that contract approves it.
Yeah.
And Mike's document.
What note should what what Tammy?
We'll send you a bit.
He said he had some documentation in there. He has something.
Yeah, we have a worksheet.
Okay, I don't need to put anything in there.
Tanner has the has a simplified worksheet for this line item. We can pass around.
I could do that. I can send that out and I'll I'll just tap in like some basic.
This was just one of those sheets that doubled. And so just a little note might help.
Yeah. So what we do in in preparing the budget, we prepare kind of a three-year plan of what I expect to happen. And then I give it to Tanner. He kind of freaks out because it was four million dollars. And then we kind of sit together. Well, the second one was four. All right, it was first one was six, right?
After I greased him up and wrestled him for a while.
So then we go through and we make the prioritization. We look at what Aaron's priorities are and the projects that are realistically gonna happen. And that's what that's what gets distilled out. It's really difficult for us to execute more, much more than, you know, a million dollars in a year.
But then again, that sends it to appropriations if something happens and said he doesn't have to spend.
No, we don't.
We end up in thermonuclear war with Azerbaijan.
We're not spending it.
Yeah.
Right.
And we haven't approved a CMR yet either.
Yeah. So they're, you know, that's the that's that's that is at the upper limit of what we can what we can perform.
We can get the Chevy. We don't have to get the Tesla.
So yeah, you know, we have survey equipment has to be maintained, vehicles, you know, these numbers, we're hoping we've we've cut down on, you know, a little bit on what we expect for those. So other questions?
I want to point out too, why is software at five and why isn't that in networking? And you'll find that with some, there are some phone lines that still have cash in them. If there are departments that have dedicated software or dedicated phone lines, like I point to, so for engineering, they need specific like AutoCAD stuff that only works for engineering. Like I can't utilize that citywide. So they'll cover that cost.
Yeah.
I need so like utilities has some certain, you know, dedicated phone lines that communicate with lift stations and whatnot. Or the police department has dedicated, you know, lines that are in vehicles for safety purposes. They'll cover most of that cost. But if it's a service line or basic, just, you know, office telephone, those have been consolidated. If it's general computer contracts like for Civica or something like that, it's better served if it's in one line. That way we can sit down with, you know, as an administration with the department and negotiate a contract. That's what we did with Google. We were out of contract with Google, sat down, kind of hardballed them, and we saved the city a hundred and sixty thousand dollars just by getting the contract. So that's the reason for the consolidation. But I wanted to point that out because you might look at that and go, why did software stick around for five thousand and not get put in networking?
Yep.
That's why.
Yeah, we pay those.
There's method to the madness.
Yeah. So the GIS, the iWorks, CAD, some of our other stuff that only only we use. But we're also under code, we're responsible for those records. So the the maps of the cities, the utility maps are things that is our responsibility under code. So all right.
Yep.
Do the pool dance?
Please don't.
Is the plan for this to go on until you're done or are you cutting it off at a certain point?
Until they tell me to leave.
Yeah.
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock, we're done.
Eight.
I'm done at eight.
Yeah.
I just wanna have a light at the end of the tunnel.
It's past my bedtime about right now.
And I'm dead inside. So I'm just gonna keep going. All right.
Lights tomorrow, I'm probably going to home early.
All right. Now, my strategy is just to tire them out until they vote yes. All right. So so now we're on to superintendent of PBNL, Public Buildings and Lands. So if you will, pay attention to the fact that the public works director and assistant directors. So this covers our public works assistant director completely, and it covers a quarter of our public works director. And you'll see that he has four divisions. So he split up a quarter and then his direct assistant directors are covered completely in each line. All right. So then you have the PBNL employees covered in that. Seasonal employees, got rid of them. But I'll go ahead and say this because it's relevant to the rest of it. We had this conversation with Mike and Mel.
Yeah.
We appropriated cash, I think about forty-six thousand dollars, forty-six, something like that, for seasonal employees. We had zero leaf breakers this year. Why is that? Because right now the wage is at thirteen dollars an hour and people laughed at us. And I can understand that. The county is currently, in fact, our tree water or our flower waters that's funded through a grant is at sixteen. So there's a disparity right there. But that's grant funded and we don't really have control over that. But the county has their part-time workers, their seasonal workers, at fifteen dollars an hour, and they can't get anybody there to work either. So we talked about, you know, the appropriation is the appropriation. If you got forty-six thousand dollars, you got forty-six thousand dollars and you could spend it if you got thirty people working or if you got five. So with that in mind, we will be coming back to council after the first of the year and asking you to raise the wage, the part-time wage to at least eighteen dollars an hour. And I know that sounds like from thirteen to eighteen, but we can't get anybody to work. And if we get three of them working at eighteen dollars an hour, and that's what it pays, and until we'll work them until we run out. So.
It is indeed more than zero.
It is indeed. Now, that's not in this section. So.
Yeah, I think we briefly discussed increasing seasonal wages last year. So I'm happy to see that.
Yeah. We got zero people.
Yeah.
Yep.
So it is definitely worth the conversation. So because if we just keep this going on, we will continue to have nobody working at that rate. Uniforms, three thousand, due supplies and incidentals, wiped out telephone, janitorial supplies, and then jump down a few lines to janitorial contract. We pay the janitorial contract. Our staff does not clean. We talked about that, I think, last year. We still had to write out the contract. So we had talked about the potential savings of getting rid of the janitorial staff wouldn't work out. So right now, Tom has kind of negotiated with the with the janitorial folks and the contract. And we're back in pretty decent graces. It's not as bad as it was. They've improved. So we're good. There's that. We do we do supply the janitorial staff with some supplies. We've got refuse removal there. Maintenance and repairs, that that line did go down, but that's typically that's, you know, that's that's the biggest fund in here. That's where we bring all of our, well, that's maintenance and repairs. That's where everything's kept. So are there any questions here? Okay. It's pretty routine. It's pretty much in track with what we did last year. Yep. Parks. All right. Same thing, superintendent. Portion of that covers our director. The other portion covers the assistant director. We got our parks employees. There it is. Seasonal employees is thirty-five, not forty-six, sorry. So thirty.
Save money.
Yeah. Yeah, you're welcome. Did right there, eleven thousand, right in front of your eyes. Any more brain busters? All right. Due supplies and incidentals, wiped out telephone, janitorial supplies there as well, maintenance and repair. So the ANC property, that is over around Cooper Cooper Progress, or sorry, Heartland Commerce Park, we are required to maintain that two thousand dollars a year for testing. This year, we only spent, what, like two hundred fifty bucks, somewhere in there?
Yep.
We're just required by the EPA to keep that line funded. Again, we only spent, what, two hundred fifty bucks. So there's about a fifteen to hundred dollar carryover. Woo-hoo, if you want to call it that. You'll see contract services there. That's a new line. We are sharing the cost for that asset, what was asset essentials, it's now Open Gov. We're sharing that across these departments. So that eight thousand dollars is the share for Open Gov there. This is, in fact, I had a call today from somebody on North Gay Street that said, hey, there's a dead raccoon in front of my house. Could somebody come get it? And I was like, hey, it's only fourteen degrees outside. Put it, save it for Danville next year. They did not find that funny. I thought it was a good one. So they did not find it so funny. But they had to call me to tell me about their dead raccoon. So what this does, what Open Gov will do as a forward-facing system, is they'll be able to go online and report that there's a dead raccoon in front of their house. Small thing, but there's a lot of those things that they'll be able to do. We can also add like street lights and things like that. We can do the whole.
Street lights can be apt.
A whole lot of stuff. Yeah. So and once we do that, once we open the street lights thing, we're gonna have to add another two hundred thousand dollars to the street lights thing. So we will be broke at that point. No, but it'll be very bright. So ball field lights, training, travel, and expenses, you are gonna see that tick up as part of all the CBAs. If you remember that we did incentivize all of the training. Part of that is, and I think I included council in one of these, every week, ODH, the Department of Health, sends out a grant, kind of like a consolidated grant list. I can include council on that distribution if you want to. Almost every week I send it to the department heads. It's pretty exhaustive. But our anticipation is that we're gonna start combing through those and trying to find ways to peel this peel this back. Of course, you don't budget based off of hope. But this is a good opportunity. There's dozens and dozens of grants built into there that we can find ways to peel that cost back. So you're gonna see that. This is OCSEA. You're gonna see that across the board with IFF and FOP. So. But insurance deductible, we wiped that out because we took it into contingencies, transfer to park development. That's zero because that those are fees that are built into all of the, not all of them, but most of these permits that are filed through iWork. As we take on Aerial Foundation Park, the care and maintenance of Aerial Foundation Park next year, we'll likely have to bring that back up to council and bump that from its ten, Brian?
I think so.
Yeah, I think it's ten right now. We should probably bump it up to twenty. Since we add two hundred fifty acres of park, we're gonna need more. Now, that is for park development, not for park maintenance. However, you're still offsetting the cost in the long run. So it's still something to consider. So keep that in mind. And we'll probably do that as like some big market basket of things when we bring those fee structures. Jeff Dur is our recreation director, has a whole new fee structure for rentals through Cubic Rec. I don't know if you saw, we just launched, you can buy your twenty-five Iowa the season passes online now, ten percent off if you do it before January first. So get it now. But anyway, a lot of that stuff going on. We've got playground equipment, tools, and Mel can skip the last line.
Tanner, question.
No. Well, yeah, go ahead, Jay.
You the tool, the tool line on both this one and on PBNL is kind of a dramatic increase. What's a is that just for this year or what are we doing with that?
So I will have to, there is a reason, and I have forgotten. Do you remember?
Is this where he talked about the?
Hot box?
It's the hot box.
The hot box. And then he'd talk about some sort of lift, but that might have been.
That's it. Yeah.
But there were some big equipment items that were in this that Tom talked.
Yes.
And I asked him to prioritize those for me today in case we needed to know.
Yes. So it's.
So that's what that's for the PBNL.
And it is a hot box.
The lift he did parks, the lift he put in the park.
I don't remember.
Yes, there.
Where he put the lift.
So what what we would have typically done is put those as equipment expenses in the capital fund. I think what my proposal would in, you know, disagree, feel free. Our proposal is build them into this instead of using those capital funds for anything but capital projects.
Are they gonna last more than five years?
Yes.
Then you shouldn't do a amount of supplies.
Okay.
Those auditors won't like it.
Okay. Well, we can do that. So.
Well, a tool is not a supply.
Yeah.
I mean, a tool you expect to last.
Right, tool.
Yeah, these are like a hot box for and like a brine sprayer to pre-treat roads.
Okay.
That we think we can save. These are some items that should last years.
Right.
Yeah.
That is the hope. I will confirm.
And we've got to have a policy that says if it's gonna last more than five years and costs X amount of dollars, it's equipment. We, we've got to have something like that, and if they meet that, then it should be, I mean, you can create an equipment account here, if you want to.
Well, I'm sure we do, we have, well, that's playground equipment, but.
And part of it was, is the city only had one cherry picker, boom truck, for changing lights, doing anything. And really, the city needs more than that to be able to get things done, you know, just like, because it, things like ball field lights don't get prioritized over, say, traffic lights and things like that. And so, they were looking at a lift they can put in the back of a truck or on a trailer to take that out to where they gotta use it, and that'll give the city two things that reach high enough up to do stuff.
Right, thank you.
More efficient.
Yeah, okay, that'll work. Uh, we'll do that, you wanna do that over in PB&L?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I'll work with Tom, get those changes made, and I'll adjust those, but then I'll have to change that over and keep that in mind. I'll have to change those figures over in, uh, the non, the non-general. Probably, I think that'll be four oh five, so, to see that change in four oh five. That's why we do this.
Yep.
Tammy, I'll check and see if we actually have a policy, I think. I think a lot of our policies were just in people's heads, so. But that'll be good, all right.
We're near the end of the general fund.
Yeah.
We can keep it rolling.
Yep. Recreational personnel, just tracking the salary line, uh, do supplies and incidentals, it's about the same. Services received, I've got that set at a thousand, just a contract out, promotional services set at five hundred. Mr. Dur locked down a, is that about eleven-thousand-dollar grant from, um, Knox DD? So, to work out some, um, yeah, over at the pool, he's gonna do an adult-changing station over there and do, uh, replace the, uh, the chair lift for some disabled folks if they wanna get into that section of the pool, so helps out there. Um, he's been given a task to, uh, well, he's done a lot of work in, uh, in Civic Rec, and he's been given a task to start pounding down on some of those naming rights to bring down a lot of the costs of some of the, um, big projects we got coming up, but we'll talk about that, talk about that later. Speaking of the pool, anticipate, uh, hopefully eclipsing the revenue of next year. We'll set it at four-hundred-and-fifty thousand in revenue. Um, we've got a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar, nine-hundred-thousand-and-five-hundred-dollar budget. We cut, cut into promotional advertising this year. We didn't really have an advertising strategy last year, uh, it's just kind of a blanket mailer. We're gonna retool the way that we do that, kind of save some costs there. Uh, the only thing that you're seeing here, you do see that transfer to bond retirement, that's something that Paul will be looking into. Uh, there's some new pool equipment that we've carried through here, and, um, then the biggest expense, of course, is the contract, so. So, we're in the second year of a three-year contract. Arbor plantings is, uh, either carryover, or it's, um, additional grants that we can anticipate coming in from the Aerial Foundation. Not a lot to talk about there, any questions on that one? Okay, and then finally, with five minutes left, strategy worked. This is, this is the miscellaneous fund. This is where you'll see, this is the biggest fund in the general fund. This is where you have employee final payoff, and if you wanna look up here, this is where a lot of the changes have been made. And this is honestly, this is where, if you wanna carve out from this budget, this is where to do it. So, you got employee final payoff set at one-thirty thousand. We've identified a handful of people that will need cashed out in twenty-five. But one-thirty, we anticipate is more than enough to take care of that. There's that PERS account we talked about. You got workers' comp, unemployment, employee insurance, there are employee insurance costs built in all the way throughout. We are gonna go back in and midterm bargain with our, uh, all of our unions to add that, um, employee, uh, the waiver benefit, see if anybody wants to hop off for a little extra jingle, save us some cash. There's your Medicare and Social Security. Sure, uh, no PNF liabilities, radio repairs, that's your outdoor warning sirens at five thousand. Community cleanup has been cut down to eight thousand at one point in time, you can see that that was significantly higher. We've kind of retooled the way that we do that, we've been able to do three extra events, uh, with significantly less money. We have applied for the DKMM grant, uh, look at Mel.
Yeah, we'll keep, we'll keep applying for the DKMM.
Yes.
Yeah, gotta clear your schedule.
Yes. I've had some, a couple people ask about tire, getting rid of tires again.
So, that's, we've asked for two trailers this time, and we'll use a skid loader, and what will likely happen is we'll do it the same way we did the cleanup day out at the fairgrounds and make it county-wide again, and, yeah, so we've got a whole plan for that. Postal service, we changed that from UPS service to postal service, that way we can broaden that. Um, public defender, that's zeroed out, auditors deductions is, yep, about the same. Uh, income tax fee, zero, state examiner's fee, like I mentioned before, that was typically carried over here, we put that back over in the auditors', uh, fee, or fund. Election expenses, that was zeroed out, that's actually, there is a petition fund, it's in the non-general fund. So, but that's not carried here. Urban improvement, it was budgeted at fifteen, we only spent three-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars, took it down to five thousand. All right. Street lighting, uh, we've had to move that consistently all year to keep paying the bill. We've added more streetlights, we've literally, physically added more, we brought more back on, and the bill has gone up, so. Brought the cost up, or brought the appropriation up, I should say. Legal advertising, that's where we're throwing out, uh, bids, RFQs, LMNOPs, whatever. Remediation for a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, that's our lime. Um, insurance, that's all of our, that's our citywide insurance premiums. Uh, down there is the general copier expense, uh, EMS billing charges, that's what we've gotta pay, uh, to pay for all those, uh, yeah. So, Jay, there's yours, that was at one-point-two. This will cover the cost of the medic and equipping that medic, and then for a down payment, uh, on the, uh, on the engine. This is per the chief and the assistant chief.
So, that'll be the down payment on the new?
Yeah, the new engine.
Then what, and what about the one that hasn't gotten here yet? I mean, he's, okay, I'm sorry.
Assistant chief.
This is the one he's ordered.
This is the one he's ordered, yes.
Not the new one we haven't ordered.
Yeah.
Thank you.
As far as like, I believe that will be a ladder truck, and that one's out for, yeah, so.
Shiny.
I'll put out a penny jar, thoughts, bake sale, anyone? Okay, okay, all right. Uh, the, okay, so we've got law library, that's a mandatory cost. You'll see that we cut out the reserve balance account, we don't have to carry that anymore, thank you. Tax liens, codification, that's to pay the Granicus bill, that's the, um, that's your bill, in fact. That's for all the codification, the, you know, council, whatever. Recording, that's, uh, anytime we do, uh, property transfers, anything that goes to recorder's office. No money for the planning commission, okay. Airport authority, we're giving them a little extra year, a little extra per year also. Mr. Mayor, if you want to talk about?
Sure.
Yep.
Um, this is a, this is a non-typical year, we do, let me talk about the, the, the increase just in general, uh, that we wanted to increase it to for, from here on out. The airport, we benefit probably the most in the entire county from the Knox County Regional Airport. And so, um, they had, we have been meeting with them, they had asked, they're doing an aggressive campaign for fundraising, and so, uh, we talked about, we wanted to bring, bring it to you. They are also asking for ten thousand one-time for the new aviation center and learning center. It's very similar to, well, it's exactly the same amount that the city gave to the new terminal, um, in twenty-twenty. Twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty, and so, it would just be that one, this would just be the only year for that one-time ten-thousand-dollar ask. It's something that also, uh, there, uh, will probably help get other people involved in, uh, donating to the cause of that. That's what it basically boils down to.
Really getting rolling.
So, that is or isn't in this number?
That is.
That is, okay.
So, annual, our new annual commitment to them that we've told is twelve thousand instead of nine, and this is a one-time ten-thousand-dollar gift.
Okay.
Uh, tree care and trimming, five thousand. Uh, the emergency management, that's a four-thousand-dollar, uh, payment for, that's our winds system. So, tornadoes and whatnot, floods, it's winds. There's that contract to the, the health district that I mentioned, sixty-five. Safety commission, it's formerly the health and safety per our, um, strategic plan. We intended to create a safety commission, we've done that. Uh, fifteen thousand of that go into, uh, building security, so to make sure that we have proper Alice training, we have proper building security as far as pressing these buttons and making sure that when we do press the buttons, we know what happens, and we're gonna get the, uh, response that we expect, so, yeah.
Tanner, Bruce is packing up over here, so before he kicks us out, the rainy day fund, is it in its own fund now?
What?
No.
No.
It's been a month, but, yeah, that, they have been ordered to do so, and they have until July to do it, yeah.
Okay.
We're just not tracking it through here.
That's, that was the point, okay.
Yeah, um, yeah, I'll, I'll be quick, uh, 'cause I wanna get down to the bigger one, I mean, there's, the biggest one here is the, we've changed some of these to support for capital improvement and support for the cemetery department. Support for capital improvement is basically just what it sounds like. Supporting any capital improvement projects through the general fund. Picking up any additional costs that, uh, it was reduced by six-hundred-thousand dollars to make, uh, to, to make, uh, some of these, uh, numbers jive. And then, uh, support for the cemetery department as well. So, cemetery department's funded by like, what is it, it's a quarter of a percent of one percent, something like that. So, they have some expansion, uh, projects going on over there, I think, Brian, did you guys?
Yeah, they're surveying.
The surveying, yeah.
Starting the next section.
We wanna GIS that so people can find their site, their loved ones' site.
So, on top of that, there's security that we've worked on, there's, uh, looking at, uh, repairing the chapel, looked at, there, there's a lot of projects that are going on over there. Uh, we've also created the, uh, or, we started working on creating Friends of Mound View, uh, that will hopefully help offset a lot of those costs. So, as they look at replacing the sign, look at replacing, I think it's about a forty-thousand-dollar security upgrade. Hopefully, Friends of Mound View can cover that cost, and things like that, so it's not a burden on the taxpayer. Yep, so, the only other thing that you'll see, uh, there's networking systems, which I think we've discussed that ad nauseam, is there any questions on networking? And the only other thing that has shifted upward is Knox area transit, the county requested that we boost that from twenty-two-five to fifty, because we are the biggest, similarly to the airport, we are the biggest recipient of that.
I'm very happy to see that, 'cause I actually talked to Trees of Miller about that.
Okay, so, that's.
Thank you for doing that.
What we've done.
I was gonna ask for that, so that would've been.
All right, so we're only five minutes over, if you have questions, please send them in, okay.
You, you gave me the question, answers question that I asked, but could you send that to me in an email so I can just look at those numbers and study them?
Yep, and I'll.
I like to see it.
I know, keep sending them to me, I'll put it in that document, I'll answer them, I'll make sure everybody gets it, and then I'll specially email it to Bruce.
Rivers and Harbers, is that what we use for cleaning up along the levee?
So, rivers and harbors is required based on our agreement. We had a completed project by the Corps of Engineers, so we were mandated to do that. That is the pesticide application we do as a joint effort with the county, because the levee's in the city now, the city.
Do we have somewhere in the capital budget, or somewhere maybe we can talk about later, about in here, about having some funds for whatever it is we have to do to clean up brush, trees, whatever around that levee area?
That's in the stormwater.
What time you can, brings up? It'll be seven-ten.
Seven-ten, you'll see a rivers and.
Okay, yep, thank you.
We are adjourned, we're five minutes over, six, seven minutes over. Uh, gave a lot of information tonight, we're gonna do non.
Do it again.
Non-general fund next time.
Can't wait.
I can.
Non-generals even more fun.
Non-generals kinda boring. If you guys have priorities or questions or whatever, just send them over and we'll move it around.